To ask Director Joyce Bowen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joyce. I'm Barbara Lewis, President of the Board. To my left is Vice President Jeff Benton. To my right, fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill. We have our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Don Houston, our Deputy Administrator and General Counsel Eric Hostetler, and Brandy Wilson and Jennifer Wallraven, our Clerks today. We can begin.
Resolution number two-five dash five-eight-four, in the matter of approving electronic corrective proceedings from regular meeting held July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash five-eight-four. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number two-five dash five-eight-five, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR zero-eight-zero-one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash five-eight-five. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five-eight-six, in the matter of setting the date, time, and place for a public hearing for consideration of a petition from the Berlin Township Board of Trustees requesting vacation of various roads within the flat of Tank Town in Berlin Township, Delaware County, Ohio, under the special procedures of RC five-five-five-three-point-zero-four-five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion five-eight-six. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five-eight-seven, in the matter of setting the date, time, and place for a public hearing for consideration of levying drainage maintenance assessments apportioned according to tax levy in lieu of the permanent assessment-based procedure pursuant to section six-one-three-seven-point-one-one-one of the revised code.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash five-eight-seven. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash five-eight-eight, in the matter of designating August twenty-twenty-five as Child Support Awareness Month in Delaware County.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning. Joyce Bowen, Director of Child Support. This year, we're celebrating an important milestone. Twenty-twenty-five marks fifty years since President Gerald Ford signed Title IV-D into law. Many don't realize that President Ford himself was a child of divorced parents, and his own father failed to provide support to his family. In fact, he was born Leslie King Jr. His parents divorced shortly after his birth. He eventually took the name of his stepfather. Since nineteen-seventy-five, our program has evolved significantly. What began as a cost-recovery initiative tied to cash assistance has transferred into a comprehensive program serving children and families of all backgrounds. Today, we partner with sister programs and stakeholders across the state, all with one shared goal: to serve Ohio's childrens and families. We connect parents to important services so they can develop strong and healthy relationships with their children. Child support is more about, more than about just money. Child support agencies deliver a set of services to ensure the well-being. These core services include: locations of parents to obtain paternity and support, to enforce child support orders, to establish paternity to determine legal fatherhood, to establish a child support order and medical support orders to address the financial and healthcare needs of the child, modification of child support and medical support orders when circumstances change, enforcement of support when a parent fails to pay. The State of Ohio serves one in four children and collects over one-point-five billion in support annually.
Wow. Oh, my gosh. Uh, why don't we go ahead and vote, and then we'll discuss?
Vote on motion two-five dash five-eight-eight. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Good. Discussion?
Uh, I appreciate you coming forward and, and bringing this up. I know we do this every year. And interesting background, I didn't realize President Ford was the, really the driving force behind creating this at the federal level.
Yep.
And, and I did know he was adopted, um, so, so that's kind of interesting to, to learn that. Thank you all for everything you do. Not, not an easy job by any means. We know that. You guys do an outstanding job, um, you know, taking care of the kids and others in, in Delaware County. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'll just add, uh, obviously, we do do this every year, and I don't want to be redundant with what Commissioner Benton said, but, uh, we do appreciate the efforts and work that's done. It makes a difference in the lives of young people in our county who, uh, desperately need the child support, and, uh, you guys play a big role in making sure that happens. And I think our county is always one of the leaders, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
We're still number one.
And, and you are an award winner multiple times.
That's right.
So can you tell us a little bit about that?
So, um, the agency in, um, sorry, hold on. Oh, I didn't bring it over here, but we normally get, um, the, um, number-one award for collections in the State of Ohio. We collected on eighty-three-point-seven-six percent of our cases for twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. Um, we collected over twenty-two million dollars in child support. Um, and then we get the, um, most cost-effectiveness. Um, for every dollar we collect, we, um, for every dollar we spend, we collect fifteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Boy. What a, what a record of success. Gosh. Okay. We have to clap. I mean, that's great. Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
So moved.
Aw, thank you.
This is some of my stuff. It's not everybody, but...
Anybody want to speak?
Would anyone like to speak?
Yes.
They're all being very quiet.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And I will read the proclamation, and then we can get a picture. Whereas the Delaware County Child Support Enforcement Agency recognizes the important role of many partners to support Ohio's children today, to provide them with a stronger future tomorrow, including parents, employers, government agencies, and others. Whereas the Delaware County Child Support Enforcement Agency is committed to working with families to help them overcome barriers in paying child support so that they can provide for their children's basic needs and ensure that their children have food, clothing, and shelter. Whereas the Delaware County Child Support Enforcement Agency appreciates staff for their hard work and commitment to ensuring that children receive the support they deserve. And whereas the Delaware County Child Support Enforcement Agency is dedicated to investing in our children, their parents, and our partners, so that the children grow up with the love and support of their parents and community. And whereas the leadership of the Delaware County Child Support Enforcement Agency, um, through, through them, many children's lives are, are brighter because of the employees' commitment. And again, you mentioned, uh, all the, my gosh, almost twenty-three million dollars in twenty-twenty-four, and, uh, also, uh, there are actually, uh, five-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five children, uh, that, that, um, you have given service to in just this past year, and, uh, four-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine cases. Whereas the Child Support Awareness Month is, support is key. We applaud parents who are committed to supporting their children, therefore, during our Child Support Awareness Month. We acknowledge and celebrate parents who provide positive emotional and financial foundation for their children. Now, therefore, we, the Delaware County Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Ohio, uh, do hereby designate, in conjunction with the State of Ohio, and designate August twenty-twenty-five as Child Support Awareness Month. Signed, Jeff Benton, Barbara Lewis, and Gary Merrill.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And we will give you the proclamation when we take the chair. Thank you, Joyce. Hi, how are you doing? How are you doing? Good to see you.
Take one with my phone real quick. Wide here. Thank you.
We can proceed.
All right. For item number seven, Deputy Director of District Six of ODOT, Tony Tereski is with us this morning.
Welcome, Tony.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Morning, Tracy. Good to see everyone here today. I know we met not too long ago to do a lovely groundbreaking out at the interchange.
Less than two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll be kind of gloss over that project beyond what we covered, um, about some traffic impacts, but just appreciate the opportunity to come out and talk to you all and give you an idea of what's going on, um, on our state system and talk about some good transportation projects. So went a little lo-fi today, no slideshows, um, but hopefully, uh, later on in the year, we'll have some good construction photos as some of these open up. Um, around the, the county, of course, the large project in front of my office is The Point, big collaboration with the City of Delaware. Um, we did implement a closure of Central Avenue.
Traffic was a mess this morning.
Was it? No.
Coming the way I come.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, it was a little bit of pain for some gain. The good news is, uh, it's only a thirty-day closure only. I say that, I know it is an impact, but that, of course, will get us open ahead of the jug. But that's necessary to do some reconstruction.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah. Never a good time to do a closure like that, but we are coordinating as well with the schools, um, as they get back to go back into session here, making sure they know how to get around, at the elementary school in particular. But looking like we're going to have that open, uh, to all the new lanes underneath the railroad bridge by the end of the year. There will be some final paving, landscaping next year, but going well. I know it's been a long project, but going to provide a lot of benefit. If anybody isn't...
That is good news.
Yeah.
Open at the end of the year. Okay.
Um, as we mentioned at the interchange, uh, most of the traffic impacts can be pretty minimal. They're working offline to build the embankments for the new bridge for really most of this year. So I think, um, what you see out there is what you're going to get for a lot of the rest of the year, as far as any restrictions. Um, a lot of dump trucks going in and out hauling off the interstate, but excited to see that bridge, uh, come out of the ground over the next year and then eventually open up the new roadways.
Would you mention to people just where the bridge is going to be then, Tony?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, this is going to be an interchange expansion, and it'll look a lot like Polaris and Gemini, and the new roadway will be to the south of existing US thirty-six, thirty-seven. Um, just north of where the old weigh station is, you can start to see the dirt piles and where the trees have been cleared, so about a mile south.
Okay.
So it's a good one. And it will connect to Wilson Road on the east side of the freeway.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, I will highlight that there's actually going to be a developer project later on this year in the same area. We are coordinating with them, with the City of Sunbury and the county engineer. Um, I believe it's DRK Companies, they're building some housing, um, next to the RV dealer, so just east of Africa Road. And they're going to be building what's called a restricted crossing U-turn or Michigan left, if you like that term. I don't. But a lot like Old State and Thirty-six. And this is really just a temporary, short-term safety improvement for their traffic that they'll have off of Africa Road. So you'll start to see some orange barrels in September for that private sector work. And that'll be in place, of course, until we build, uh, future phases of the interchange.
So, so Africa Road, if you're going north in Africa and you get to Thirty-six, you'll turn right?
Yep.
And do a U-turn?
Exactly. Michigan left. Yep.
I've never heard it called that, but that's an interesting phrase.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you'll have to build a turnaround.
Yes, the private sector, uh, the company or contractor will build that U-turn.
Okay. Okay. Interesting.
Yep. And we'll try to make sure we share a heads-up, um, as they, they come out in the field, so...
Yeah, that, that left turn on Africa there is, is really a tough turn, so I'm glad to see at least a temporary fix.
Yep. I think it'll be beneficial, um, to get us through and hopefully the, that phase that actually builds the connection to Thirty-six with the new roadway that we are building. You know, hopefully that, uh, about a four-to-five-year timeline for that one to get into construction, so assuming funding is available.
Right. Okay. Good.
Other, uh, good work that's going on around the county includes the construction of a roundabout at State Route three-fifteen and Hyatt's Road, kind of in south-central Delaware County. Used to be a four-way stop, um, certainly congested, and we actually had enough accidents that it warranted safety funding to build a roundabout. Got to visit that site on Friday. It's coming along. They have the roundabout, uh, cut out, and they'll be, they've been pouring some concrete for curbs and different things. So we gave them, uh, thirty-to-forty-day window, uh, to open that up with some incentives. So I think that'll be wrapping up here towards the end of the month.
Oh, really?
So it's going pretty well.
Okay.
So county engineer sets the tone. Um, they usually build a lot of their roundabouts within about thirty days, um, so I don't...
He smiled when you said that.
Exactly. I don't want, I don't want Rob or Chris showing me up if we, if we go longer than that. So a good friendly competition, but a good project, good collaboration there as well.
Well, Rob is smiling, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good. Um, we're also doing some drainage and operational work while the roadway is closed. So three-fifteen, this is mostly what you'll see this year. Um, they will have some utility relocations for a project next season that will continue to do, um, additional intersection improvements, like a roundabout at Jewett Road, which pulls a center turn lane to the two neighborhoods to the south, and also some slope stabilization. Of course, the Old Tangi River is very close to three-fifteen for much of that alignment. We want to keep the roadway open and safe, so we will have a longer closure next summer.
So Jewett, will the round, there'll be a roundabout there?
Yes, sir. It'll be a pretty small diameter, trying to fit it in between the river and many things at that intersection, but that should be a good safety improvement.
Yeah, that will be...
Will be small enough it'll prevent larger trucks from going through there? Is that indirect benefit or...?
It'll be enough that they can go up and over. It will not be one of these large roundabouts that they can go through at speed. So I think it'll provide that speed, um, calming effect, just because of how constrained the area is. So that'll mostly be next year. I did see they were doing some utility work in the area, uh, earlier this summer. Still in this season, uh, primarily in Union County, but on US forty-two, um, southwest of the Scioto River, uh, we're doing some pavement reconstruction all the way down to US thirty-three. So right now, forty-two southbound is closed, and we have a detour over to Marysville and then back down using thirty-three.
Which I experienced about two weeks ago.
Yeah. It's, um, it's a little bit out of the way, I recognize that. Um, we're doing some essentially reconstruction and widening, getting some safety features, uh, turn lane at Jerome Road, if you know where that's at. Um, so this is about a ninety-day closure, we're probably about three weeks into it. Um, they'll open it up over winter, and they'll do the balance of the work next year with a similar closure. So I understand it's a big detour, but this is, there's a lot of growth on forty-two. Um, and one of the really good things that'll come out of this is wider shoulders and rumble stripes. There's a lot of trucks on that. If you've ever driven down there and seen one of them drifting left to center, um, we'll have a rumble strike down the middle to wake them back up. So it'll be a good thing. Yeah. Um, paving within the City of Delaware includes William Street, which is US thirty-six. They do that work at night, so we don't disrupt, um, all the, the heavy traffic that's there during the day. Uh, they've done all the repairs, and they're working their way east from Houck Road, and I see it move a little bit every day. I don't know if anyone drives that here, um, but that should wrap up by September. So I think that's been pretty minimal disruption. And then two other projects that are starting, uh, this is not in Delaware County, but it helps a lot of commuters, two-seventy and I-seventy-one on the north side by the Anheuser-Busch Plant and Worthington Steel. Um, every day, two-seventy eastbound backs up, because there's only one lane on the bridge to go north towards Polaris and up here to Delaware County. Uh, we started a project that will widen that to two lanes. So that should make that a lot better. You'll see that open up, uh, by the end of next year. You'll see mostly rebuilding and widening of the structures overhead this season, so that's what's going on out there. Should be a good safety project. And then also nearby our interchange, uh, we are also reconstructing the rest areas along I-seventy-one. Most folks here in Delaware County probably aren't stopping there, it's more through traffic, but, um, if you've been to ones elsewhere in the state, they get reconstructed. We add truck parking, uh, make it more accessible, um, for different folks, and essentially, these are original interstate, um, features. They're, they're at the end of their life, so they get rebuilt, and they're much, much nicer facilities. They're the most visited locations of any state facility, uh, out there, so you'll see those close, um, probably a good time while we have construction at the interchange. Um, closed in mid-October is our current timeline, open up about that same time next year. So very nice, um, and it'll highlight local tourism, um, locations such as the state parks, um, I believe the Veterans Memorial, um, over in Sunbury will be featured, if I recall correctly. So it's nice to have some local tourism sites highlighted, uh, within the buildings, so people know where to stop if they're nearby. In the future, we have some other projects to give you a heads-up on for next season. Um, we will be rebuilding many of the bridges along State Route two-twenty-nine between the Village of Ashley and US twenty-three, like essentially just reconstructing them, doing paving, that type of stuff. So there will be a longer-term closure of two-twenty-nine, uh, next summer. So we'll be getting there, investing in that roadway. I mentioned three-fifteen paving and the Jewett Roundabout. Um, we'll also be starting some of the improvements, um, out of the Intel suite of projects. So the first one that's off the board will be a roundabout at State Route thirty-seven and County Line Road. So I believe, um, our local partners have taken the lead on that. Um, county engineers, that actually has two ODOT districts and two county, um, engineers involved, and going to be a good project. I believe that starts maybe at the very tail end of the year of twenty-twenty-six and will continue into the next season. But good to see that one, that'll also be a safety improvement. I believe I spoke with some of you, we had a planning exercise that we had an open house last week, um, really looking at what's the future of the State Route thirty-seven corridor from here in Delaware out through Johnstown and Sunbury and actually out past Intel to State Route one-sixty-one. And really what it does is it walks through and says, here's what we need to do in the next ten to fifteen years, uh, to make improvements, primarily intersection improvements like turn lanes or roundabouts, different things like that. Had good meetings, a lot of good public feedback, and all those materials are available online, and we're taking comments for the next thirty days. And I'll send, um, send a link and information, um, so you guys can share that with the public through your meeting minutes, um, and kind of see what's going on here at, say, Domagan Road and thirty-seven, or out here at the interchange, get an idea of what we're planning. It's a lot of good stuff, things that are manageable, things that can be built with current funding. So very important roadway, we want to make sure it's, it's serving the public and doesn't get outstripped by a lot of the growth in the area. We continue to improve US twenty-three. We've had public meetings at Kuver Road, um, near Buckeye Valley High School and State Route two-twenty-nine. Looks like we'll be building interchanges at both of those, and we're going to be moving forward through our, uh, additional detailed design, buying property, and eventually moving into construction in the next few years. So very excited to see those. Those have had some, um, very unfortunate crashes, uh, over the years, over my time in this seat, so excited to see those improvements moving forward. We're also continuing to work on other locations north of the City of Delaware, and we're pursuing funding for interchanges at Home Road and Orange Road. Those are a little tougher nuts to crack because of how expensive the land is down there and how built up it is, but because of that, um, high-traffic levels, we're going to get more benefit out of it. So we're working through that, um, and I'll also tie into some of the improvements that the county engineer is working on to build a great separation at Orange Road and the railroad, uh, by the Chiller and just east of US twenty-three. So working closely with them to make sure those projects align in the future.
Tony, on the Orange Road, uh, intersection, uh, wouldn't, uh, we're, we're interested in, in the northeast corner of that, you know, and, and redeveloping that, but we're waiting on, you know, final set of plans from ODOT for that intersection. When do you think you would have the final, uh, decision made on how you're going to go forward with that?
Yeah. I think we'll be able to work on your particular parcel a little bit sooner than our overall layout, and will give us some flexibility, um, if we need to move it, you know, kind of ten-foot either way, because we have kind of a preliminary drawing that we've worked on with the engineer's office, um, to see how we're going to lay that out. We'll still need to actually procure the money. We'll probably, probably have a decision on that, um, probably roughly January of twenty-twenty-six, and then we'll go through and engage a consultant to do their layout, and of course, we'll do all of our public meetings and all of that. But I think we'll be able to work on that particular piece a little bit faster, um, I think is our game plan, so... And happy to, to follow up offline on that one in a little more detail, so...
And I've, I've got one thing that I talked to you about, the, uh, the traffic merging from, uh, Sunbury Road West onto two-seventy, and I know you said there's some, some things that may be done on that in the future. It, it seems it's, it's dangerous.
Yep, we're going to try to make additional improvements at that interchange long-term, but as they're doing that final paving from the added lane we did out on one-sixty-one...
Yes.
That should make it a little less severe of a merge in the near future, or at least a little, as long as we can before we hit an overhead branch or other things.
Oh, thank you. And I had wondered with, with Intel and the problems that they're having, um, whether you are, you're still do, everybody still goes ahead and, uh, makes all the changes? I, I don't know. I don't think anybody knows exactly what's going to happen with Intel, but I wondered if you had seen any differences in traffic?
We've seen a lot of benefits from our widening on one-sixty-one. I think that project was warranted with or without Intel, was very congested, um, and I think we'll still continue to see benefits from the other roundabouts we're building, um, out in the area. So I think we're, we still have our funding, and we're still moving forward with those projects.
Okay.
I think you're right, we don't know exactly how that, uh, that development will take shape long-term. I think these are good projects that'll give benefit, um, with or without that, and also highlight, um, a lot of other developments in place, be they data centers or the Amgen expansion. There's still a lot of stuff going on in New Albany that's growth, growth-oriented, as well as housing, particularly in Johnstown and Sunbury.
Yes. Good, good point, yes. Yeah, things that needed to be done anyway, so...
Yep.
That's, that's great. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. I don't know if you were going to get to it or not, Tony, but that, uh, in the last budget, you know, there was five-hundred thousand, I think it was five-hundred thousand set aside for a study to route traffic between twenty-three and seventy-one in the northern part of our county, or even, uh, Marion County. And, um, I think ODOT was tasked with doing that study and doing it fairly quickly, as I recall.
Yes, that's all accurate. Um, it's House Bill fifty-four, and the legislature required, uh, ODOT, as well as the Turnpike Commission, to collaborate and look at a freeway connection between US twenty-three and I-seventy-one, and they initially said have it done by October of this year, and that would have been, um, quite challenging, probably impractical, to say it. And they did give us an extension in the operational budget. So what they've done is said, hey, look at, um, kind of a high-level look at different potential alignments and corridors by October of this year, and then hone in further over the course of the next year with additional information, and have our report, um, to the legislature, as well as local stakeholders like yourself, by October one of twenty-twenty-six. And we're going to have public meetings, um, if you recall our effort from twenty-three Connect a few years ago, here's all the things we're looking at, considering, we're basically working with our consultant now to line all those up and start scheduling those meetings, and we'll share those with, um, all the stakeholders, as well as the general public all the way through. But they're really essentially right now honing their pencils, just big picture, what does this look like? So should have a lot more information early October, and then public meetings to follow pretty quickly after that.
I realize it's a federal project, but just an observation, I'm sure you're aware of it, too, when you exit twenty-three, you go to two-seventy going east, you get from the seventy-one going over far enough to go two-seventy, it's a, it's a challenge.
Yes.
So.
And I think our safety project at Seventy-One will help, because they won't be running them into a bottleneck, but exactly what you said, it's still a very short distance.
And you've got to move over about two, three lanes.
Exactly. So longer term, you know, that was like a thirty-million-dollar contract we sold to do the widening of these ramps and rebuilding these bridges, to make a, what we call a braided ramp, one goes over the other, so you don't have that congestion, that weaving, is what we call it, would have been probably more on the order of a hundred or two-hundred million dollars, like when we built the trench, and we chose to say, let's get the one we can do and make it better in the short term, and plan, you know, however many years down the road to build the more complicated fix, if this doesn't do enough to make it better. So this will still be a benefit either way, because you have the lane on the ramp. I would like to highlight two other things, good safety projects, we're actually able to work with the county engineer's office and collaborate and pursue safety money for a roundabout at US Thirty-Six and Ostrander Road, of course, in Ostrander. Longstanding crash patterns, we're really excited to see that and improve that.
That's good, that's another dangerous intersection.
Yeah, important for the township, important for the village, I'm glad to see that one going, so we'll be picking a consultant and moving through over the next four years to build that one out. And just to make sure that the point isn't lost, we don't just do freeways and roundabouts, we do make pedestrian and safety improvements, and we're able to work with Brown Township, the Village of Kilburn, the county engineer, as well as Henmicks, and we pursued and got safety money to build sidewalks along State Route Five Twenty-One in the Village. So Brown Township's built a new maintenance facility, a new park, Henmicks building a shared-use path along Old State Road, we'll get sidewalks along our infrastructure on Five Twenty-One, make it more walkable as that area gets rebuilt and renewed, we do safety projects like that all over the state and in my area, but wanted to highlight, we also help those other modes as well, and I should highlight that, three different entities are getting together to make that area better and more walkable, so excited to see that one go forward in the future.
Yeah, that's, that's neat, Kilburn's really coming along, that's what I need to see.
Yep.
I just want to say, we really appreciate the job you and your whole group does here in this area, you guys do a fantastic job, and I've already applauded in session and just before the session started, you're groundbreaking extremely well, and we're all excited about that, obviously, and over the next ten years, it'd be great to see that finished, so thank you for all you're doing, and it means a lot to our county, and our growth of our county is dependent on a lot of these projects.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Merrill, I truly appreciate it, the partnership with both the Board of Commissioners, county engineer, I'm excited to have a ribbon-cutting, I think, in about two years and writing the groundbreaking.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Tony, can't let you get away without asking about Big Walnut Interchange, what's, what's the latest there?
Yeah, we're working through traffic numbers with our central office, they are showing that it provides a lot of benefit and that it relieves congestion on the side roads, so overall, makes the overall network better, and I say that just fewer miles traveled, fewer accidents, fewer time waiting in traffic. We want to see how these Twenty-Three and Seventy-One studies play out and see what they dictate in terms of additional lanes on Seventy-One, that's kind of been the, the big question on this project, if you let traffic on at Big Walnut, it does a lot of good things in terms of relieving congestion, but it does add vehicles to Seventy-One, we want to be responsible and make sure we figure out how many lanes we need to add to accommodate that, and we don't want to fix one problem and create or exacerbate another, because we squeezed about as many lanes as we can out of Seventy-One in the Polaris area. Get much wider, we're going to have to start getting new right-of-way and that kind of stuff, so we've been trying to sharpen our pencil on that, so.
And I appreciate all the outreach, Tony, that you and ODOT are doing, and we receive numerous notifications, and, and those are given to the public, too, and so heads up to, to everybody, so that's most appreciated, and all your, your other work, the groundbreaking went very well, and to, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tony, for everything, you guys do a nice job communicating, working with, and taking on some tough challenges, and a lot of these projects are not easy, so appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all.
Did our administrator have any questions? Deputy administrator, go ahead.
No, Tracy Davies Administrator, just want to thank Tony for his partnership, ODOT has been a great partner in conjunction with the county engineer's office, so always appreciate working with them on projects, they routinely include our office as long, as well as the county engineer's office in meetings.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Tony.
We appreciate the updates.
Yes, absolutely.
Take care, thanks.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number eight, resolution number two-five-dash-five-eight-nine in the matter of approving supplemental appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Justin Avi, Director of Finance, this item's been submitted for various budgetary adjustments, including fleet vehicle repair services, as well as software licensing for the nine-one-one department for their RMS and CAD system.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-eight-nine, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-nine-zero, in the matter of accepting the roads, approving recommended speed limits, establishing stop conditions, and releasing bond for Cheshire Woods, section four, phase A.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, this is your chance to shine. Tony.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, good morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer, before I start on this item, I wanted to take a second to thank Director Trowinski for being here this morning, and his words, I, I will say, there's probably not a week goes by where I'm not in contact with Tony, or we're not working directly with his office, and that collaboration, that partnership has really been probably as good as I can ever remember in my history with the engineer's office, so Tony's a big reason for that, I think, and I think that's, everything that's happening is, goes to show that that partnership is working very well, so actually, just a second ago, scheduled a follow-up call with Tony about another project, so, on to the next one, but, so for this, this item, Cheshire Road, excuse me, Cheshire Woods, section four A, the roadwork was completed last year, the developer hasn't been maintaining those new streets and stormwater features for the last year, we are now in a position to accept those new roads, place them on the public system, and release the surety for that project.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-nine-zero, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-nine-one, in the matter of approving amendment number one to the cooperative project agreement with Berlin Township and Orange Township for improvements to Shanahan Road.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
As you may recall, we are working in joint, as a joint effort with both Berlin and Orange Townships to widen Shanahan Road from Route Twenty-Three to North Road, that work is progressing, we have design about, I'd say more than halfway done, the townships have approached us about adding a shared-use path to that project, and so we've worked with them to come up with this contractor agreement modification that will basically provides that the townships will deposit the estimated cost of that path to add it to the project, they'll deposit that at the time we go out to bid, if there is a difference in the cost, we'll either bill them or refund them any, any balance when we build the project, but I think that'll be a nice upgrade, particularly for Old Tangi Schools, having the middle school and high school, but really just all the growth in that area with Evans Farm and all the other developments, that'd be a nice project. We are currently scheduled for, we're anticipating construction in 2027 on that, we may be able to break ground late next year, but we will be working with the affected property owners probably for about the next twelve months, once we make those offers, hopefully over the winter for the needed right-of-way. Utility work will take some time as well, so most of our, as much as I'd like to, would love to guarantee a construction schedule, it's entirely subject to utility work, so we'll keep working on that and hopefully wrap that up in the next two years.
Okay. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-nine-one, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-nine-two, in the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
These are all pretty typical utility installation permits, as you can tell from the long list of permits, we have a lot of activity going with utility work, I would say primarily this is new fiber optic installations. I spoke a few weeks ago, I think, just in general about what we're seeing, just probably a good time to refresh that our responsibility as the county and even the townships is to make sure that the work within the public right-of-way is done properly. The vast majority of the work on the fiber projects we are seeing, particularly in Concord, Liberty, Orange Townships currently is outside the public right-of-way, it's in existing private easements that were platted with these neighborhoods where the fiber is going, and so our authority is somewhat limited, with that said, we have contacted and had discussions with the companies that are doing some of this work, both AT&T, Alta Fiber, I would say we've encouraged them to maybe do a little more in reaching out to the residents and owners that they're going to be impacting, certainly since they're someday going to be wanting to sell them broadband access through these new fiber optic cables, so I think they've taken that and they, they recognize they, they need to do that, and so we'll continue to work with them and get the word out as we can, but I did want to make sure it's clear, our statutory obligation and really even authority is somewhat limited in this regard to the, kind of the right-of-way line to the right-of-way line.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I noticed, like you mentioned, a lot more fiber projects on this list, and I think a lot of it looks like are in the northern townships where they're setting new fiber lines as part of this fiber expansion project that we've initiated at the county level, so that's, that's certainly good, good to see that, that project moving along.
Yep.
Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-nine-two, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-nine-three, in the matter of approving the first amendment to the cooperation agreement by and between the city of Delaware and Delaware County for regionalization of central traffic signal software system.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
As you may know, we work with the city of Delaware and have a software system that operates and remotely maintains our traffic signal networks, and so we currently have had that system for several years now, we've had a number of discussions with Powell recently, and Powell has expressed interest in joining into that system primarily for their traffic signals on Sawmill Parkway, and so this amendment will basically include Powell into the prior agreement, they will be sharing the cost for that software system, paying their share, and this will allow them to do a lot of things we currently are able to do, which most importantly, I would say, is remotely monitor the function of those traffic signals, we get notifications when there is an outage, when there's a power outage and so forth, so we can mobilize a crew if needed to swap batteries or so forth, but this is a good thing, making sure we're, because the corporation line kind of runs in and out, particularly on Sawmill Parkway, and so I'm not sure you're right, the average motorist knows where city maintenance stops and starts and county maintenance stops and starts, so overall, good thing, this also spreads out the cost a little bit more, which is a good thing for, for us.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-nine-three, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
That brings us to administrator reports.
Thank you, Rob.
Nothing for me today, thank you.
Commissioner, Beth.
There's no, he's here.
He's in the other room.
Yeah, just a couple things, we've got Morpsy Executive Committee this Thursday, Morpsy is going to join, at least it's on the agenda to join the CO-A-A as a regional partner, and then the Hartford Fair is in effect now, and I think we're going to a brunch on Thursday, like their, their annual brunch, so, nice little fair, it's always fun to go there. Tony, go.
Yeah, I was going to mention the Hartford Fair, that's Thursday, and it is, it's a nice, compact fair, and they always do a great job out there, so that's all I had today.
And we do have need for executive session.
We do, resolution number two-five-dash-five-nine-four, in the matter of journeying into executive session for consideration of pending or imminent litigation.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-nine-four, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
We're now recessed into executive session.